Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. This time we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward has an excused absence this evening. Board, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $54,779.70. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated February 3rd, 2020, in the amount of $54,779.70.
I make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Under unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting, we have two items. The first item is a sewer refund request for Roger and Rita Johnson, who live at 82 South 9th. They have been dealing with this, with the city, for over almost a year. And it regards two liens that were filed, and they paid for two liens and only should have paid for one. So, anyway, the liens have been released, and they are requesting a refund of $329.34. Before I ask for a motion to approve, Jim, did you have any comment on that?
Yeah, no. She had been working on getting this refund. She sold a house and paid the fee downtown, and then also had to pay here, just to get it sold in time and not be delayed any longer. So, should have been refunded months ago, but unfortunately it was not. So, again, the 329.34 is what she's asking for, which is what she's owed, so.
Dave, any thoughts on your end?
No, I just don't understand why it took so long to pay it, but...
That's a very good question. It was...
I am.
There was no excuse for that.
I'd make a motion to accept it and pay the claim.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Not on the agenda, but we want to wrap this up. One of our citizens, Nathan Tupper, came before the Board at the previous, at a previous meeting with a problem that he's encountered with his sewer system. So, the Board voted to let Mr. Tupper and our attorney work it out and come to a reasonable solution. So, our attorney's here tonight to, they have done that, and he's here to present his findings. So, Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Tupper not here? I don't think he is. He said he's gonna be here tonight, but this is the sewer backup we had back on October 7th, 2019. It was an issue related to the high school. We had a contractor come out to help us fix the blockage, and then Mr. Tupper had the loss. He had sewage in his basement and some property damage. What I did is I had, I worked with Nathan the last couple of weeks in collecting some invoices and just doing an investigation into the types of claims he's making, and here are my findings. There was a, there are two invoices for Mr. Plummer that had to come out. Phil went to the property, took some pictures, and I talked to Phil, and I'm satisfied that the work Mr. Plummer did was related to the loss. There are two invoices I have in your packet. There's one for 3627, and then 696, a total being 4325. The Rotary, on the day it happened, he contacted them. It was an emergency call. He paid $4,500 to have them come out. He still owes the $10,641.40. Again, the invoice is in your packet. My recommendation would be just to pay these directly, and then I'll talk to you in a second about the refund on the $4,500. So, the invoices support the amounts. Mr. Tupper had originally come out and gave us an estimate for his property damage, and I wasn't satisfied that it was a disinterested party, so he had somebody come out, this Hayes and Sons', and their estimate is a little bit lower than Mr. Tupper's, but I'm satisfied that this is a disinterested estimate on the property damage to his home, $13,250. The $4,500 would be, we would pay, I still need to get the canceled check or proof that he actually paid that, but if you take the $4,500 off the Rotary invoice, that's the He has some receipts on various property damage. Again, I was satisfied it was related to the losses for $464.16. He's seeking various losses based on personal property at 4920. I think the equitable result here would just be pay half of it, so we pay 40, I'm sorry, 2460, which would be 50% of that. He's asked for other losses, electricity bills. He wants somebody to come out and fix his yard where they had to dig to fix the lateral and his labor for $2,000. I, you know, we dealt with this with another party a few years ago, and we didn't pay these types of damages, so my recommendation would be not to pay the $2,000. The grand total for this loss is $31,315.56. Do they have any questions?
Can you say that again, the total?
Sure.
Fifty-six.
And again, we would pay those invoices, the one to Mr. Plummer and Rotary, we would just pay those directly. You know, this is a really unfortunate situation. I wish we had a legal remedy. We do, but it's not a viable one, and I think, again, you know, we usually don't pay claims for people who have basement backups, but this was clearly not that type of situation. So, that's my recommendation.
Dave, any questions, thoughts?
No. I went through it last week, and two weeks ago, I mean.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation to pay the claim.
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no new business to carry, or new business tonight, comments from Board members.
I have no comment.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:08 PM. We will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting as soon as we reset. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. This time we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 43 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,642,292.97. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
There are a couple of things in here that I wanted to pass on. We have two complete payrolls in this.
Correct. January is the fun month, so there's three payrolls in the month of January, so there's two payrolls on this docket, so seems a little high, but that's why.
We also paid a death benefit to Grady Shipley's wife, Barb. So, I appreciate the Police Department working with my assistant, and Jim, I appreciate your efforts on this. It was a nice, after he passed and the services were over, the family came in, and Jim and the police chief sat down with him and talked to him and went through the, what they're entitled to, and it's already been taken care of. So, that was a very nice exchange, and I appreciate it very much. Having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated February the 3rd, 2020, in the amount of $1,642,292.97.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Tonight, we have several items under new business, and the first item is landscape proposals for 2020. Brad?
In your packet, you'll see the chart that I've included that has the totals for the 2020 landscaping proposals. I would recommend that we stay with Borgman Enterprises. He was the low bidder. The four areas that we're talking about are the roundabout at Sherman and Albany, Centennial Park, which is the small little park at the end of Garceang, right on Emerson there, where there's one of the towers, the southernmost tower, Emerson Avenue, and that is just from Churchman up to Albany, that center area, and Main Street in the business district. And the three companies were Borgman Enterprises, Restoration Landscape, and Pro Cut Landscape. Borgman was at $20,805. Restoration was $25,065.50, and Pro Cut was $32,528. We've had a good relationship with Borgman, so I would recommend staying with them.
Can you explain for people that may be watching, how come we had to get bids?
Anytime we go over $10,000, we have to get at least two bids.
Brent has been very good with the city, and I would certainly, Dave, recommend that we stay with them, Borgman Enterprises. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I have no problem with it at all.
If not, no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to accept the bid from Borgman Enterprises not to exceed $20,805.
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Brad. Next order of business is 20, the 2020 paving agreement with United Consulting. And I welcome back our friend, Brian Pearson. Brian, good to see you.
You as well. Thank you very much. Good evening, Board. Like the Mayor mentioned, I'm here tonight on behalf of United Consulting to present a proposal for professional services. This is related to what we have called the 2020 roadway improvement projects. For the past several years, the city has been able to set aside part of their budget for repairs and replacement of roadways, driveways, curbs, sidewalks, anything related to the public right of way and traveling. This year, the proposed improvements are on various locations around the city. Those locations include Rodney Court, Dangerfield Drive, Roderick Court, Buffalo Street from 6th to 7th Avenue, Fletcher Lane from 6th to 9th Avenue, 8th Avenue from Bylin to Fletcher, and finally, a section of Grovewood Drive between Edwards and Jerry Drive. We have visited all those sites and put together our preliminary construction costs for it, which leads into an application that the city has prepared for the Community Crossing Matching Grant. This is a program put on, run through NDOT that offers, depending on your local public agency's size and location, urban, rural, and population counts, in this case, it offers 50/50 matching funds for construction of selected projects, selected road construction projects. The estimated construction cost for these locations is just over $700,000, which means we have actually, Brad has submitted an application already through LTAP and NDOT to request the $350,050 50/50 matching grant that is scheduled to be awarded, I believe, late March or early April is when that announcement is supposed to be made. Unfortunately, that grant does not cover professional design services or inspection services that happen during construction, so those fees are separated out, and that is what I am here to present tonight. These type of fees provided by United Consulting include the site visit and checking out the field conditions to observe the existing conditions and formulate the proposed methods to repair the roads, as well as preparing plan sets for bid for construction, preparing quantity calculations, cost estimates, and everything needed to get the project to bid, so that we'll come in here and bring a whole bid package in. Contractors will come pick them up. That will be another bidding process here, like Brad was talking about. We will bid that work out, which we've been pretty successful at the last couple of years, gotten some good bids and have some good relationships with the people that normally do bid this work. And our professional services agreement through United also includes part-time inspection so that we can act as the city's representative or eyes in the field when that work's being done, and that person we have out there usually is responsible to communicating with Brad and the Mayor about the day-to-day operations that go on during construction until it's complete. So, like I mentioned, the Community Crossing Grant application has been submitted. We will not find out until a couple of months from now whether or not that money's been awarded. Our contract is set up in such a way that we can design the entire project now, which we want to do to keep it on schedule. Ideally, we'd like to bid this project to construction in March, or I'm sorry, in the 1st of April. We can, we can get that plan set together and do that. Unfortunately, that runs right up against with when the Community Crossing announcement's gonna be made, but again, our contract is set up so that we can design that project for you, and then whatever, if we were to be unfortunate enough not to get the Community Crossing money, and we had to reduce the scope of what we could actually build this year based on the city's budget, our contract will only inspect that amount of work that's being done. It's an hourly not-to-exceed amount, so only the time spent in the field doing construction inspection gets charged. We have been successful the past three years, I believe it is, getting this Community Crossing grant. There's no reason to think necessarily we won't get awarded again this year, although more and more people are interested in sharing this money. So, to sum it up, the professional services amount that we're asking for to cover the work I described is $151,600. Are there any more questions about either the construction or the design side of things?
Yeah, I think it would be good for the, for the public to hear, how do we go about? What is in place that tells us this road needs to be fixed?
Oh, yes, very good point, and this, this helps with our Community Crossing application that we submitted. The city keeps very good records. It's actually called a pavement asset management plan that gets updated thoroughly every two years, but also gets updated once a year. That document rates every, every section of streets throughout the city, gives it a rating of 1 through 5, and documents the worst conditions in the city, and that typically corresponds to the roads and streets that we propose improving as part of these projects. And again, that convinces the, the NDOT reviewers and the people assigning the money through the Community Crossing Grant that we are addressing the city's needs and problems.
So, these roads that you mentioned a little while ago, they fit in the worst category?
Right, they are in the poor condition.
I, I just want that, the public to be clear that we're not paving roads that were paved two years ago for a political favor.
Right. These road selections are based on level of need and the deteriorating condition of those roads.
Dave, you have any questions?
No, other than the fact Grovewood, we're only paving a certain part of it. I guess to pave the whole thing would cost an arm and a leg, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would get up there beyond, I believe, what the city's budget would be for this year. This section in particular, between these two roads, is, is again, the kind of worst analyzed section of this roadway.
That's all I have.
All right. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Beach Grove and United Consulting.
I'll make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. You can approach, Brian.
Fantastic, yes. I have two copies of the agreement that we can sign tonight, and one for yourselves and
If we, if we're awarded at this time, I think that puts us almost to $1.5 million.
That was the number that I had in mind as well, as far as money that we've gotten through this NDOT program to date.
Which is excellent.
Very good deal.
Doesn't matter which one's yours.
I'll take that one, that's fine.
Brian, again, thank you, and tell everybody, especially Bill Hall, hello, course.
Will do. Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you. Fire Department step increase.
Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask for approval of the pay increase of Michelle Saunders to the position of third-year firefighter. If approved, Michelle's pay will increase to $2,680.1 per pay period. This will take effect, the payroll start in February 8th, 2020. The increase for position pay is in our 2020 budget. I apologize, Michelle caught a run, she had to leave.
Dave, any questions, thoughts?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request from the Chief concerning Michelle Saunders' position pay for third-year firefighter.
I'd make that motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, ambulance billing write-offs for the Fire Department. I think this is, it has a special connotation this year because council's going to have to address ambulance rates here in the near future, but go ahead, let's do this first, then we can talk about new rules.
Dear Board, I come before you today asking for the approval of ambulance billing write-offs for 2019. The amount includes Medicare, bankruptcy, death, and unable to pursue. The total amount of ambulance billing write-offs for 2019 is $3,425,213.61.
Somebody listening at home that hears that, that's a staggering amount of money that's been written off.
It is a staggering amount, and just comparison, in 2017, it was $3,200,000. In 2018, it was $3,300,000, and it just seems to constantly increase. Our revenue was over 1.2 million last year in 2019, and that also decreased also. We have several issues facing our department. We haven't increased ambulance billing rates since 2017. It was brought up to the council in 2018, and nothing was heard on it. Couple of challenges facing the ambulance services whole is House Bill 1372, which is currently being presented to the Senate, but that would set a customary rate for ambulance billing that insurance companies would pay. Most likely, that pay rate will be a lot less than what we currently receive, so that would potentially decrease our revenue also in the future.
I think one of the things that I appreciate, appreciate about the ambulance billing, when we started ambulance billing, our ambulance service started back in 1973, but when we started billing, it was never, it was never based on your ability to pay. It was always based on your need as a citizen who calls for help. So, and that holds true today, and that's very important, but on the other hand, the federal government is telling us that if you call for, if someone calls for an ambulance, especially if they are under Medicare or Medicaid, we're going to give you this much money, and then as a result of us accepting assignment, we accept what Medicare and Medicaid pays us. So, after that, we have to write it off, and those figures go up each year, and if we don't respond to it, then that hurts the whole geographic region because the rates are based on what we charge as a region. So, we have to really be careful, and we've held the line on raising rates for the citizens of Beach Grove. Number one, we don't want to raise rates on anything, but we, the council's going to have to hear this pretty soon because this new legislation that the state legislature has enacted here recently, kind of hurts a little bit, especially for private ambulance-based services that provide service to a city. So, we're not as bad off as someone like Greenwood or Franklin or someone like that, but this hits a little bit, and so we're gonna have to look at it, and, you know, I've asked the Chief to come in front of the council in March to, to talk to them about it and see where we need to go with this. So, anything else on that, Chief?
No, not at this time, Eric, except I will have a packet for the council concerning our rates, and we still remain one of the lowest in Marion County, which, like the Mayor stated, it does affect the whole geographical region when these insurance companies take a look and they try to find that customary rate for ambulance service. We're really pulling not only ourselves, but other departments and municipalities within this geographical area down with that, so we need to take that in consideration.
Dave, any other thoughts or questions?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the write-offs for 2019 in the amount of
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Last item under new business is surplus equipment. I'll defer to the clerk. Jim?
Hello. Dear Board, the Clerk's office would like to surplus the following items that are no longer of use to the city. Desk and hutch, the drawers missing and broken, three keyboards, a Fellow's paper shredder, model MS460C. It does not work, and my understanding, it has not worked for a year or more. A Dell computer screen monitor, and then a computer mouse, so that is it, so just those items there.
Any questions?
No.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the surplus request from the Clerk Treasurer.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
I second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:31 PM. The City Council will convene for their monthly meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. This time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, February the 3rd, 2020. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templeton, Councilman-at-Large.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
James Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Kara Ferguson, Council-at-Large.
Robert Ferguson, District 3.
Gary Hall, District 2.
Uh, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, under special presentations, we have three items tonight. First item, uh, since we've last met, uh, we've lost, uh, uh, five, uh, longtime citizens of, and workers of the city and I want to, uh, recognize their name into the record. Dick Greenfield. Dick, uh, uh, resided on Byland for a long time, him and Carmen. Ron Eck. Ron Eck was involved in the Beach Grove Little League for over 25 years. Uh, Grady Shipley. Grady was a police officer with the city of Beach Grove for 20 years. Uh, Webb Hunt Singer. Webb was, uh, firefighter with the city of Beach Grove for 27 years, uh, serving four years as the chief. And just, uh, it was announced today, Kitty Thomas, uh, Reverend, uh, William Thomas's wife. Uh, she was, uh, our, uh, Pastor Thomas was, uh, the pastor at the First Christian Church on South, on North 10th. She passed away, so, uh, I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of those folks. Thank you. Under special presentation, uh, Jim Brooks. Jim is here for, uh, Southeast Relay for Life. Jim?
First of all, I might be a little late, but congratulate the new council. I, uh, know you guys got your hands full and I hope you have a good time and do everything good for Beach Grove. Now, I'm talking about Relay for Life. I've been involved with Relay for Life for 10 years, since I lost my son-in-law to cancer. The relay itself is going to be June 19th and 20th at the Beach Grove High School football field. We'll be there 24 hours. We'll have all kinds of bands and musi- and games and food and, and there's a lot of you I know want the food, Kevin, so. But, uh, it's a good time. We work hard. We, all the money we raise goes to cancer research and I am one that benefited by that because of some of the things that they did, that I, the treatments I had, was, was, was money was raised through cancer research and I'm cancer-free now, so. But, uh, and also this next Saturday at the community center is our chili cook-off for the Relay for Life. All the chilis free. Just come here and try as many chilis that you want. There'll be, uh, from venison chili to white bean chicken chili and there's some you'll have to take an ice cube with to put in your mouth after you eat it. The only thing that you pay for is the drinks and the desserts and some people will have, uh, souvenirs and it's not souvenir, but knickknacks and things you could buy. The way, the winner is chosen, uh, when you come in, you get a little ticket and you put it in the pot where whichever chili you like best on the table, you, the people you like best. And you all can also put a little money in their pot and whoever raises the most money gets one little prize. Whoever has the most tickets in their chili gets the other prize. So, and I'm not bragging, but my chili's won the last three years. I'm an ex-firefighter and I can cook, but, uh, my chili will be venison chili. If anybody's ever had venison chili, come to my table. So, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, sir.
Next, uh, we'll hear from, uh, Garrett, our athletic director at Beach Grove High School.
Good evening, everybody. Um, our principal, Dr. Walters couldn't make it tonight, but she gave me a few notes to talk on her behalf. Uh, congratulations to our music program for their holiday performances. Uh, Credit Rescue, this past winter, uh, host of our seniors, was well-attended. Construction on the tornado damage will pick up in the, uh, next couple of weeks. Uh, I know it's been kind of slow and nothing really, it's been going on tornado damage, but a lot of the, uh, paperwork that had to be filed with the state and, uh, construction approval and whatnot is finally done, so we'll see a lot more action on that end. Um, we've tested our ninth graders in the PSAT and our 10th, 11th graders for ASVAB. And then our spring play coming up, The Bed of Thorns, will be February 27th to 29th at 7:00 PM. Now for athletics, so to update everybody on our college signings, we have Alexia Hamm, who will be attending Danville Area Community College for softball. Niaja Lee will play basketball at Ohio Christian University. Rachel Davis will be attending Pensacola State University for volleyball and Josh Fryer will be attending Ohio State University to play football. Um, if you're familiar with Josh, he actually was one of like 100 football players across the nation to attend the US Army All-American Game in San Antonio, Texas. So, they came to our school in December and we did a jersey, um, entered, uh, a jersey presentation for him, um, which is really neat. He's a, obviously, our one and only player who's ever done that before, um, plus he's going to Ohio State University, which is a big-time football program here, uh, in the Big Ten. So, really excited and happy for him. He got a chance to go to San Antonio for a week and practice with the best players across the, uh, the nation and I know that he enjoyed the experience. Um, I could, actually got the chance to go out there myself. I have some friends who live in Austin, Texas, so I flew out there with them, um, stayed with my friends and we all went to the game and watched them play. So, it was a lot of fun. Um, right now, we're a busy time for winter, uh, a lot of sectionals going on for our sports. So, wrestling sectional this past week was at Southport High School. We had six wrestlers advance onto the regional at Perry Meridian. Uh, 113 pounder Villa placed third plate, was third, 132-pounder Ethan placed fourth, 138-pounder Phoenix placed third, 145-pounder Harley placed third, 170-pounder Jacob placed fourth, and 285-pounder Jack placed second. Uh, while the coaches were happy that we advanced six guys, they were kind of disappointed with some of the forms. They expected a win or two, um, at the wrestling sectionals, but they're excited for regionals that we still have six guys, a chance to move on after that. Girls' basketball sectional will take place this Friday at George Washington High School versus the winner of Indian Creek or Heron. Uh, girls' swimming sectional will compete, um, this Thursday at Lawrence North. Boys' basketball over winter break actually got the chance to play in the hu- the historic Hoosier Gym. Um, they played a tough, rebuff Jesuit team that went to overtime, but ultimately we came, we won the game. Right now, they're currently nine and four on the season and they're undefeated in conference play after defeating Lutheran this past Friday. Um, with that being said, this past week was actually our coaches versus cancer week, as well as Chick-fil-A challenge week. So, the Chick-fil-A challenge is with Lutheran. We've done this now seven years and we've been victorious five of those years, so we've won three in a row. So, basically, I'm sure a few guys have heard about it. You partake it, you partake in it. Everyone goes to Chick-fil-A, you buy as much food as you can throughout the week. You tell them it's for Beach Grove. The nice thing about it is that Chick-fil-A donates 20% of all the money they make for the week back to us and we, uh, donate it through different, uh, organizations. So, Riley Dance Marathon, our Southeast Relay for Life team will get some money. Um, Champions Together, which is for Special Olympics Indiana, and then also some of it will go towards our cheerleading program and, um, our Beach Grove Renaissance team. Uh, Kusha versus Cancer, obviously is a big deal for us with, uh, the passing of Matt English. He was such a big figure in our high school and our community. So, um, that was a great way to kind of, uh, the, uh, let the Matt English Foundation speak and present what they've been doing the past year, as well as the Relay for Life team. I know they had a representative there to talk about what they're doing. Um, spring sports are up and going. So, track team will get a new high jump, uh, pit this area, two lanes of new hurdles and the track, the boys' team will get new tops. Girls' team got, girls' team got new tops last year. Baseball team will get new in-home and away uniforms and they also got, baseball and softball team got a new batting cage in the auction gym, which they're really excited about. It's a drop-down cage that comes from the ceiling and drops down over the court. Um, it's really nice because the ones we had before were like on the sides of the court and they're always in the way and they're old and nasty. So, I know they're really excited about that upgrade. Um, last but not least, we actually hired a new boys' golf coach today. Our former boys' golf coach, Steve Cox, is now the middle school athletic director, so Aaron Baldwin, a Beach Grove graduate of 2008, will be our new head coach. Thank you.
Garrett, if you want to, can you mention Mr. Bain quickly?
Yes. Um, Mr. Bain actually, um, so he was recognized at our last, um, school board meeting. So, they will name the Beach Grove Wrestling Room after Mr. Bain. So, obviously, Mr. Bain's been a pretty, uh, big figure in Beach Grove as well throughout the years and many roles, but, uh, one of his main roles was being a part of the Beach Grove Wrestling Program and, uh, basically to make it to where it is today. So, we're excited about that.
Didn't he wrestle on the Olympic team?
Did he?
Tryout or something like, I mean.
That'd be a great question. I could definitely research that, but.
Silver medal. Silver medal. I thought he did.
Yeah.
He also wrestled for IU.
Oh, that's awesome. Yeah. So, yeah, we're excited about that. I know we'll be working on a plaque that will be, uh, placed outside the wrestling room for him. Um, and we'll do some type of presentation when it, when we go to that.
Cool.
Thank you, Garrett.
That concludes, uh, special presentation. Uh, council, you have in your packet, uh, minutes of the previous meeting dated January 6th, 2020. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. There's no comments or corrections, uh, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Public comments. Counselor?
Yes, uh, Bonnie.
Guys, I'd like to make a motion to give Bonnie six minutes. Anybody would second that? She has a few things that she'd like to say.
I'll second that.
Is that, I can go ahead?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good evening, Beach Grove residents. Mr. Mayor, council members, and other officials. My name is Bonnie Dickinson. I reside at 509 Birch Street in Beach Grove. I wrote out my presentation because I want to stay on task. To this point, I'll be regu- begin reading from my text. Mr. Mayor, uh, wherever you are, you have always been a gentleman toward me and spoken to me with respect each time we have met. Possibly, this is why I was so surprised and taken aback by you, as well as the council members at the January meeting and your behavior and attitude in our individual talk. Pursuant to the January council meeting, the January RDC meeting, and my conversation with the mayor following the RDC meeting, these listed concerns are presented. You can view the council meeting on thebeachgrove.com or YouTube to see what concerns I had there and then the RDC meeting just fueled some of my concerns. I wanted to speak with the mayor on some, actually, one question and, um, as I talk, it just, one question came after the other. So, this list of comments raised red flags all over the place for me. In my questions, the mayor answered these following questions. I, as mayor, appoint people who do what I say. I, as mayor, have projects that I want done and I appoint people who will do what I want them to do. In answer to my question of a governing person or document, the mayor stated that he did not need to listen to this argument of talk. I just wanted to have some education as to how the system worked. So, we continued on. I, as mayor, appoint people at my pleasure. I can fire whoever I want and there is truth in this. However, his body language and his emphasis on firing at will and people serving at his pleasure was disturbing. The last response from the mayor was, there is no governing board over me. The voters put me in office. He turned and walked away. I'm afraid I looked a little stunned to the two gentlemen that apparently were listening to our conversation because my mouth was wide open in unbelief. The mayor was very candid. The last three weeks I have spent searching for document, person, or an avenue to voice these concerns. My search has taken me to Beach Grove website, city officials, lawyers, Indianapolis city offices, the cities of Speedway, Carmel, and also out-of-state people. The governing body, it's we, the people of Beach Grove. The avenue is bringing my concerns to the legislative branch of our city, which is you, the city council. Every elected official and appointee of Beach Grove works for us, the citizens. We function as a democracy, not a monarchy or a dictatorship. We, the ci- citizens of Beach Grove, want to work in concert with our elected officials and appointees. We want to be included in choosing the projects of our city. We want to be included in the discussions of why or why not a project is beneficial for us. We, Beach Grove citizens, do not want the council, the mayor, or other boards forcing things on us. We want you, as elected officials, to do your research and present documents to us so we can be in on the decision on how to proceed. We understand that you have work that you have to do that doesn't need our input. However, everything that impacts the running and redevelopment and improvement of Beach Grove, we want to be in partnership with the elected officials and appointees. We want from our public servants, respect, consideration, and a chance for community wisdom to prevail. Let's make Beach Grove great again together through our combined ever, efforts. Mr. Mayor, I don't see him, so.
I'm back here.
Okay. And I'm probably not seeing too well right now. Mr. Mayor, my council representative, Mr. Day, please respond by addressing my concerns that the mayor is overstepping or abusing his authority and that our officials, appointees, are not serving us, the Beach Grovers, but serving the mayor by being bobbleheads. Put the honor and dignity back into our public official positions and respect us as citizens of Beach Grove, for you all serve at our pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Hook?
Before I begin, could I ask for some extra time in case it goes a little over three minutes? Hello, my name is Barbara Hook Griggs and we live at 101 South 17th Avenue. First of all, congratulations to the recent elected council members and best of luck to all of you in the next four years serving our great community. I was recently advised there would soon be an open position on the Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission and I would like to publicly announce my interest. My first request was an email sent 12-7 to expiring and newly elected council members, which was never responded to. I would have been in attendance at that January meeting if I had known attendance was required. The second request of my interest was by email to the council members and Beach Grove, and Mayor Buckley, using the Beach Grove Council Group email that was not a valid email, email address on January the 29th. I feel I would be a great asset to the Beach Grove RDC as I have been studying and researching RDC rules, regulations, and our Beach Grove RDC since early 2019. As a community member, I would love to be part of helping our great city and community members by serving on this board. I live my life and help others with the utmost integrity and honesty. This is DNA that was pounded into all seven of us kids while growing up. There is absolutely nothing I wouldn't do to help others in need when possible. My background, it includes the following. I was raised in Beach Grove through my sophomore year when mom moved to Speedway for a more affordable housing. We moved back as soon as I graduated from high school. My parents owned and operated Sadie's Barbecue at Fourth and Main, where I learned to cook potato salad in 25-pound quantities. The biggest asset of being a child of this business is how I learned it always pays to give back to community members. I have 45 years working in the insurance industry since 1975 as a legal secretary, farm underwriter, networking, sales, and service of all personal and commercial lines of insurance. I still do this today as a commission-only insurance agent. Networking includes not only membership, but being a chair of a Southside Networking Group called Rainmakers for many years and co-founder of a Gold Star Group, Positive Connections. This was discontinued in 2016 due to my illness. I was a past member of the Beach Grove Greater Chamber of Commerce and board member for approximately one and a half years until I had to step away from it in 2019. I'm a past member of the Sertoma Club of Greenwood until breast cancer in two thousand sixteen and volunteered countless hours to help communities. Maybe you have heard of WhamFest, which is held the third Saturday in August every single year. Not only did I volunteer for the event, but I volunteered countless hours setting up commercial insurance requirements and validating all vendors that they had the proper coverage. In the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve Sertoma year, I received the Sertoman of the Year Award, which reflects my continued service in making a difference in the community. I was a recipient of this award both on the club level and the district level of all Indiana Sertoma Clubs. I was a past president and longtime member of the Franklin Township Chamber and brought in more new members, forty-seven, as a president than any other in office. I remained a member there also until two thousand sixteen happened. I began college for some crazy reason at the age of fifty-eight, finished sixty credit hours with a four-point-oh grade point average, and after I realized old people can still learn, and it wasn't helping me a bit with my insurance career, I quit. Please consider me as an option for possible upcoming openings for the Beach Grove RDC. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Barbara.
Anybody else who'd like to speak that did not sign up?
I would like to give Janice King an opportunity to speak. She's interested in the RDC as well, so if we can go ahead and let her get an opportunity.
Hi, everybody. I don't have a prepared speech. I just thought I would come in here and talk to you about what I want to do. I have been on the RDC before. I was on there for two years at the direction of Mayor Buckley, and I really enjoyed it, but typically when he puts somebody on there and assigns them, they're there for a year or two, and then he likes to change it up and bring somebody else in, which is what he did. Recently, I've been asked by a couple people within the city if I might be interested in joining the RDC again. I would very much enjoy that. If you don't know me, my background is I was raised here. I raised my two kids here. My daughter Caitlin is a first-grade math teacher at Hornet Park, and my son just finished serving seven years in the Air Force and came back and started working for PPG in their aerospace division. My daughter lives here in town. My son couldn't find a house that he wanted to buy here, so he lives in Broad Ripple. The one reason that I would like to be on the RDC is that now that Elizabeth has now become on the city council and has also come on to the RDC, I see a great partnership possibly developing between those two groups. When I was on the RDC before, we didn't have that partnership. We didn't get to work with you like that, and I think that that is going to open up great avenues for us to be a team and get more things done in this community. You know, we're competing with Irvington. We're competing with Fountain Square. We're competing with Old Town Greenwood. For the new kids that are coming up, the professionals and the families with small children who are wanting to downsize and not buy the larger homes, they're wanting to move into these communities. And the thing is, is that we, as a group, need to work together to be able to take the homes that are here, flip them, make them better, so that these people will want to move here. We have a fabulous police department. We have a wonderful fire department. We have a great school system, which I'm a board member for the school. And these are three things that families are looking for when they want to come here, so the next thing we have to do is coerce or entice homeowners that are here and landlords to take care of their property, clean them up, modernize them, make them look better, and take care of those that when they flip them, that the houses surrounding those areas are also enticing for these people to buy. My son looked for a home here, actually, and he found one that he loved, and he got outbid on, but there were several others that he looked at that were not in good shape whatsoever, and when you go to look at a home that somebody wants a hundred and fifty thousand for, and there's mold on the walls, nobody's going to buy it, so he chose to go to Broad Ripple instead, and I would have loved to have had him here. So, I think it's our responsibility to work with our commercial landlords to see what we can do to help them better their properties. My background is design and leasing. I can figure out how to make a landlord happy with certain terms that may not be just straight rent. Maybe they would benefit from a lower rent, getting a part of the sales from the tenant so that they still get their money, but they benefit while the tenant is becoming successful. These new groups that we want to bring in, these new families, they shop local. That's what they want. They want to walk down on Main Street. They want to go get a craft beer. They want to have a great place to eat. They want to go to a little pub, and the wife always wants to go to a great boutique. That's what we need to bring here, and I would like to be a part of that to help better the city and help better the town in general all over.
Thank you for your positivity.
Thank you.
Anyone else, counsel?
No, I think that's good. Thank you.
All right. Committee reports. The ABC, there was no business for the ABC today. RDC, Liz?
Yes, we had our, welcome, everyone. As the president of the RDC, we had our first meeting, January the sixteen. We reviewed and passed two new resolutions. Resolution number one, two thousand twenty, it's discussed reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses for commission members, and of course, that would have to be voted on. Those specific invoices would have to be voted on with a majority vote. We also passed resolution number two, two thousand twenty, and this is a conflict of interest resolution. Our next meeting will be on February the twentieth. We have invited, and I've gotten a positive feedback from Trent Newport from Crossroad Engineers. He has agreed to do a presentation on March the nineteenth meeting, and that will be to go over and answer any questions about, from Crossroad Engineers about the Franciscan Trail and as far as layout, any questions, because there have been several questions from the community specifically about what's moving, how that's going to come about. I did include with, I gave copies of all the, my fellow council members, Mr. Webb's two thousand twenty goals for the RDC. Number one was to fund and complete the first phase of the Beach Grove Greenway Trail, the Franciscan Trail, and that construction is to start around June of this year. We also to fund and complete sewer infrastructure improvements on the former CSX property. This will be a major project for the RDC, and no debt will be required. If anyone is interested, that is resolution four, two thousand nineteen. So, also, you have, that I passed out, the maturity schedule for the bond. A lot of questions about the bond, and that was from previous administrations, so there's a schedule of when that will be complete, the final maturity. The last payment will be January fifteenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, excuse me. You can always reach me at city website. You can call, and I'll be, or please come to our meetings. And the one on March the nineteenth, I hope, we'll get a lot of response from that, especially for the Franciscan Trail from Mr. Newport. So, anything else, I'll be glad to answer.
Thanks, Liz. Compliance Division, you should have the report in your packet. You were given a Greenscape monthly report and public safety report this evening when you arrived. The last report this evening is financial. Jim?
Good evening. Just a month into my term, and I've been very busy in the clerk treasurer's office. I briefly list some of the things that have, that we have been working on in the last month. Payroll was completed for January seventeenth and January thirty-first. There were three payrolls in the month of January this year. The one hundred R, which is a report of names, addresses, duties, and compensation of all public employees, was submitted last week. This is a yearly report that is submitted to the State Board of Accounts. Pension relief was submitted and approved last week. The pension relief fund was established in nineteen seventy-seven to help cities and towns with the financial burdens associated with the police and fire retirements. Access was granted to the city website. I'm still working on updating current information, bank information, and meeting information. There's a lot of information on that website to update, and I will continue to work on that. I attended Ames Clerk Treasurer Boot Camp on January twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. This was downtown Indianapolis. Ames provides many services for our city, and I look forward to taking advantage of what is offered. I met many fellow clerk treasurers at this conference and also joined the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk Treasurers. This group will be instrumental in helping my office operate the best it can while staying up to date on current practices and state code. My deputy clerk, Angie Hoffman, and I spent some time in Delville, Indiana, last week learning about our financial software Keystone. Recently, I learned that the city of Beach Grove does not have a hard copy of Beach Grove ordinances to date. I've ordered a copy from American Legal Publishing for a cost of seventy dollars. This cost, I'm sorry, this book will be available to view in City Hall after it arrives. Ordinances and resolutions for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand eighteen and two thousand and nineteen have not been processed to date. I asked American Legal to go ahead and code two thousand and eighteen and process the year two thousand and eighteen. Once that is done, I will then have them process two thousand and nineteen ordinances and resolutions. This is a very costly project, but it's one that has to be done, so once we hopefully get caught up soon. Part of eighteen was done, so we'll get eighteen finished and start with nineteen as well. Bank statement balances are listed below as of today, February third, two thousand twenty. These totals are prior to the claims that were approved earlier this evening. City Corporation, three million, one hundred, twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. The utilities, five hundred, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. The criminal investigation fund, fifty thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. The RDC general fund, three hundred, one thousand, six hundred, fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, and then the RDC debt service is two hundred and forty thousand. I'll continue to have information updated as the year goes. I am appreciative of the mayor, the city council, counselors, department heads, city employees, and the citizens of Beach Grove for their patience during this time. Any questions, please let me know.
Questions for the clerk?
The ordinances and resolutions that you're getting as documents, will you put online on the website, please?
We will, but yeah, I'm working on, like, the ones for tonight or the ones previous.
But the ones that you're getting that you ordered for seventy dollars?
Yes, most of them should be on there, so if not, I'm still working on getting things uploaded from eighteen and nineteen that were never uploaded, so yes, I'm working on those.
That's on the American Legal website or whatever that is, when you go to ordinances on the Beach Grove?
Not all of them are on there, so they were never ordered for all of eighteen and nineteen for some reason, so we have to order those, and we have to pay per ordinance and per resolution for them to put it online, so that's what I ordered for eighteen. Yes, on the city website, I'll get those up soon as well. That's what I'm working on now.
Any idea when those will be online, on the Beach Grove website?
Hopefully, the next month or two. Yeah, like, I'm working, there's a lot that we love to go back towards, so the ones on the docket that are on the agenda tonight, they're up on the website already, but the ones previous, I'm working on getting up there now.
Thanks, Jim. We move to unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. RDC resignation. Tara Wolf was a member of the RDC, and unfortunately, she had to resign, and she has submitted a letter, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resignation letter into the record, please.
Mayor Buckley, the Beach Grove RDC, please accept this email as my official resignation. It has been a great journey with you all, and I am so glad to have been a part of the team to better Beach Grove. Don't worry, I will still be around and plan on doing whatever I can to make Beach Grove a better place for my family and all the others that call our city home. Thank you for welcoming my family to Beach Grove and for being there for us during our greatest moments, like welcoming our sweet Jack. Mayor Buckley will pass this along to the city council. Keep up the great work. Sincerely, Tara Wolf.
Motion to accept her resignation. I make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Aye. I think it's terrible. With that, you have an opening to fill, and I'll defer to the council president pro temp.
During this process, I prepared a statement. I'd like a little latitude here. I would like to take a moment to apologize to the citizens of Beach Grove. During January's council meeting, our city executive officer and legislative body violated Indiana Code Title Thirty-six and Beach Grove Ordinance Chapter Thirty-one, thirty-one dot four. Please accept my apologies in this matter, and thank you. Under those two, it simply states that as the executive, executor of our body, the mayor, he's responsible to facilitate this council, and by removing yourself like that, it just puts some awkwardness in January's. So, I want to promise to the citizens of Beach Grove that we maintain a standard of professionalism. We might agree, we can agree to disagree, and that's fine. And, but January's meeting was very disappointing as a citizen, as an American, and per the code, we have that responsibility.
Are you talking about voting?
I'm talking about removing yourself from even, if you're physically incapable, what is it, what does it say? Not available. Let me just read it. This applies to a third-class city, and Beach Grove is considered that based on our population and our financial standing. As a city executive, shall be preside over all meetings of the legislative body, but may vote only if it is a break or a tie break. At the regular meeting of section seven of this chapter, and each preceding January, the legislative body shall choose its members to be a pro temp to preside over when the executive is absent, and serve respectfully, you're not absent. So, I'll move forward and continue this regarding the absence of Mrs. Wolf, which, and I'm just, I'm trying to figure out why you're removing yourself from this.
Because it's a council appointment, and I'm not on the council, and I'm not going to speak for the council.
You're not speaking for the council.
I speak for the council if I vote.
You're only, you're only required, per what it states in the city, or state code, Indiana code.
Would it have been better off if I say I abstain?
You wouldn't even been required to actually remove yourself as far as voting. I'm saying as far as doing the actual presiding as the chair that you reside in.
If you don't, if you want me to vote, I'll vote, I'll vote tonight if you want me to.
You're allowed to vote if it's a tie per the code.
I'll vote tonight if you have a time.
But removing yourself, like, right now, from the chair, because per Roberts' rules, if you decide to do that, you're supposed to vacate, and you're not, you're not part of the remainder of the meeting. I'm, and I'm just, I'm asking you to simply fulfill your obligation.
How is he not presiding over the meeting?
Well, when he, when he passes it to the individual as of last January, I was chosen as pro temp. That was obviously something that worked, and I, that's okay. I've got big shoulders. But from that, from there on, that entire January's meeting, and you can ask any citizen, a lot of communication back and forth was completely unprofessional. That was all orchestrated, and you know who did it, and should I say this publicly? Shame on you for doing that.
We've only been doing that for a long time, Gary.
You've been doing it wrong then.
No, we haven't. No, we haven't.
So, anyway, that's, that's what has been pointed out. By fielding all the questions, I receive phone calls, emails. The community is like, what are you guys doing? You know, so to put the council, again, we're a body. We should be unified, guys, and I've said this before. You know, and there's other issues. I've called, left messages. My own colleagues here don't even call me back. That's what we're, that's what we're providing you, the citizens, and that's very discouraging, very discouraging, you know? And I'll say this publicly. I did not ask to be pro temp. Anyone can, that knows this, knows this, honestly. But I respectfully do that based on your asking. That was not something that was orchestrated, but again, shame on us for doing this.
I want to say, and I don't totally disagree with you, Gary, but sometimes when I did things, I didn't really do it as pro temp. Pro temp has two jobs, and I think you're bringing it up. One is the absence of the mayor.
Yes, sir.
And the second one, of course, is, one of the big ones, it sometimes has to do with signing of the budget, which is just once a year. Those are probably the two biggest. What I just did was, was if the mayor wanted some assistance just out of the council, I kind of took it on just as a council member. Because the mayor can ask us to say, hey, do different things, but I, I'm, I just wanted to say something because I see where you're coming from. At the same time, I don't know if you violate any, any laws or anything, but I do want to say I understood what you're saying.
Okay, I appreciate that. But please understand, I just want to give the citizens the best product we can give them, and I think we filled them as a team, okay? So, continue going. If you like, I'll take this.
No, I'll take it.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You have an opening on the RDC. You have several options. You can appoint someone, or you can table it to get council input from you folks, or you can not fill the position. I'm open to anything. Any motion?
We have three candidates, but I'm not real familiar with really any of them. I'd like to learn a little more about them myself. I know some people want to vote and get it over with, but I'd rather talk to the candidates myself. But if they want to vote, they can vote, I guess. That's just my opinion. But if they want to vote, they can vote, I guess. That's just my opinion.
I wasn't present in January and I could not be considered because I wasn't present.
You, you, no ma'am, that's not right.
That's not true. I actually asked the mayor.
That's what was said in the meeting.
That's not, no, it's not.
I don't, I, go ahead.
If you're not here, you're considered, but what I think the council did, ma'am, it's, we've had, we've voted people on the council that are this. We've voted people on the RDC that have not been here. Your not being here only put the others ahead of you, I guess. If none of the four of you had been here, they would have still voted. It's, it's happened in the past. But I don't, I know your name, but I don't know anything about you. So I guess from my point, I would like to talk to you and see what you, besides your, you know, what you talked about tonight. I know we've had one person on here that's been on the RDC.
Did you vote in January?
I sure did.
Did you know all the candidates?
I knew the one I voted for. Sure did.
I, I'd agree the same thing. I voted for one that I knew of. I would have preferred maybe a one-on-one. It's, it's okay to come up here and, and, and talk in front of everyone. I think that's great. But sometimes just questions you might ask, you hate to get into that dissertation on a, on a platform, you don't know what you might ask, it might, uh, might not come out appropriate, so I, I agree with Dave sometimes that, um, making sure that you have that. I, I've always done it in the past, so I guess it was different. That's why I asked to table it. When I found out all the names, and I did not know all the names last time, and we have a new name that's interested I did not know about. Um, I always like to make phone calls and we talk one-on-one, we've met for coffee and things like that, and then be that prepared as a council person, uh, to make a, make a decision. So I was just backing you up on that, so.
For questions? Every council member knows this December the seventh, when I sent my initial email to all of you that I was interested and not one of you has picked up the phone to call me.
I, I agree, and the thing was, is that, uh,
We've talked, haven't we?
Yeah, I did.
I talked to you.
I, I talked to you.
Talked to me.
We spoke. Well, I'm, I make a motion to those of us who are prepared, who have done some research to go ahead and nominate and see where we end.
I, uh,
Karen, go ahead.
Sure.
Go ahead, proceed.
Alrighty, I'd like to nominate Barb, um, Huck, Barbara Huck.
There's a nomination, a second?
I second it.
And we'll do a roll call beginning on my right. Gary?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Four to three, she gets appointed to the RDC for a period of one year. That concludes unfinished business under new business, resolution number three, two thousand and twenty, encumbrance of funds. And before I ask the clerk to read it into the record, um, I want the clerk.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, unfinished business, uh, if you recall, um, per Roberts rule, I tabled, uh, last month, the ordinance issue that we, we had spoken about for Mrs., uh, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miss, Mr. Wade and, uh,
You're the first one.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, and it was tabled.
Gary wants to do, maybe he wants to.
I'm sorry?
He asked, I wanted to make a motion. I was gonna see what you were gonna say, because.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had tabled that. Should we engage that at this time, or do you want to let that?
If the council's prepared to make a, a recommendation.
Well, this is what I'm going to ask, because what, again, and I apologize again, and I, my colleague as well. Uh, I've contacted certain colleagues with on the, on the body, and I'd like to refer that to committee, and that way I can actually get some people to commit to help me make this decision. I've done all the fact-finding as far as statistics on the, on the corners. I've spoken to all the businesses in that area, but I just want to present the facts to the body. I, I want it to be an open decision, and I, I was, I had the pleasure of reading with the, the deputy chief and the chief the other day with Mr. Bill, and had a great conversation, which I appreciate their time, and it was said at, at one time that it was talked about including from Emerson to Eighth, and that was something to regulate other businesses as well. I was not aware of that. So again, I need you guys' help to make sure this is the best amendment, if it is even required. So if I could refer that to a committee and ask for some assistance from the body to help me with that.
So in other words, you want to table it?
I want to ask to create a committee of councilmen, since I've called them and no one called me back, I'm out there hanging in the wind. So I'm requesting my colleagues to step up and be a part of the process, to see what I'm missing, to make it fair to take in consideration the residents. I've spoken with residents, they're completely unaware, but I think the young lady that was the audience in January, I've taken that into consideration, spoke to her. I, I know Mrs. Lamb made a, a recommendation for metering. I think that's way over the head, not necessary. Uh, but again, and then also, in January, I also had a meeting with Indianapolis Compliance Office with Mr. Bell and Mrs. Chapel. And in that, there's other requirements due to that Norm's Ralph's Barber Shop is a business, he's required to have solid surface paving, he cannot put gravel, which would hi- highly impact his business financially, and I want to make sure he's aware of that. I've reached out to Norman, talked to him as well. So he's reevaluating the, you know, logistics on that as well. So I, I just like a little effort from the body, uh, to make an informed decision for the citizens, because this will impact everybody. This is main street parking. Okay? And I just don't think it's fair for me to just go out there and, and propose something to you guys, and obviously you're going to vote on it. But I want it to be a fair assessment of everyone's resource, because we all pay taxes. So I'm, I'm just, again, required, uh, referred to committee, requires a second, it's debatable, amendable, and it does require a majority vote, so I'd like to make that.
There's a motion to, uh, form a committee to research this matter. Second?
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir. Just a little, I'm asking for a little help, sir.
Yeah, I'll second.
I appreciate it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Thank you. Would anyone like to assist me with that? All you simply have to do is read my facts. Buddy, anyone else? Buddy, okay, well, okay, thanks, guys. Thanks for your time.
Who was that again? Can you say who, who was on your committee? Buddy?
Bobby and Buddy.
Bobby.
And Gary. Thank you.
Okay, anything else under unfinished business? Under new business, resolution number three, two thousand and twenty, encumbrance of funds. Before I ask the clerk to read it into the record, uh, Jim, can you give us an update on the actual balances and what happens if it comes in under balance? Or underfunded or overfunded?
Yeah, the, uh, so basically we, there was some work done in two thousand and nineteen that was, uh, budgeted for, approved. We haven't gotten the invoices until this year. Um, so in order to spend that money from last year and not use this year's budget, we have to encumber the funds. Um, and the invoices are coming in less than what we're asking for. The encumbrance will ask for the money that the invoices are going to be. We cannot spend over that amount. Any money that comes in, if the invoice is less than that, the money just is not spent, um, and just so stays in the general fund. Um, but I don't have the copies of the invoices in front of me, so I don't have the exact numbers. Um, actually, I pulled up my phone real quick. Um, sorry, I forgot to pull that off there. So the totals. So, let's see, sorry. Total, uh, the remaining balance for Smith Projects is to bill fifty thousand, seventy-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, so, and I have copies of that invoice as well, so. Um, yeah, so much less than what it was. There are a couple of change orders that they had to come out with change of process. The, uh, total sum of work completed was five hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Um, a couple of change orders made it a total of five sixty-six, one eighty-one point eight nine. Um, and those change orders were, number one, the Twenty-Fourth Avenue was for nine thousand, forty-five dollars. Um, and then number two, for Seventh Avenue, a tree curb demo and violent destruction pipe, equalling three nine four three. So, um, so the encumbrance basically just allows us to spend last year's money that was approved without affecting this year's budget. Um, if we don't do that, then it'll already, already take out money for this year and projects that are budgeted for this year.
Questions for the clerk? Now I'll ask, uh, the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution number three, two thousand and twenty. Resolution number three, two thousand and twenty is a resolution which authorizes the clerk treasurer to encumber funds from the two thousand and nineteen budget to pay two outstanding claims that have not yet come forward for payment for work that was completed in two thousand and nineteen. Whereas the city conducted the paving project and hired Smith Projects to perform the work. And whereas the city continued to make sidewalk improvements and hired Robertson Paving to perform the work. And whereas both Smith Projects and Robertson Paving completed the work in budget year two thousand and nineteen, but have not submitted final invoices for payment. And whereas the city has requested that these contractors submit their final in- invoices for payment. Therefore be it affirmed that the common council at their January twenty twenty meeting approved by a voice vote to authorize the clerk treasurer to encumber funds to pay these two claims. Therefore be it further affirmed that the common council instructs the clerk treasurer to pay the final two claims as follows. Robertson Paving forty-three, six, thirty-five point zero zero. Smith Projects, one sixty-three, eight eighty-four point three five. Therefore be it affirmed that the common council only authorizes these two, these two payments be encumbered from the two thousand and nineteen budget and be paid when invoices are presented. Therefore be it further affirmed that the resolution shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro temp, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Comments or questions? If not, ask for motion to approve resolution number three, two thousand and twenty.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Thank you, counsel. General Ordinance Number One, two thousand and twenty, is an ordinance that adjusts the trash collection fees for Beach Grove Sewerage Works customers. Couple of weeks ago, we had a workshop and, uh, our financial consultant, Jeff Peters, came out and, uh, went through, uh, went through the rate study that he did. Uh, we're joined tonight by Nikki Franklin, who is, uh, works with Jeff Peters. Jeff is not available this evening, so she's available for any questions you may have. But the rates, uh, the adjustment rates are less than what, uh, Jeff originally, uh, approached you about, and I want to read those, uh, effective the twenty-fourth of February, it would go from fifteen dollars to seventeen dollars. January first of twenty-one, it would go up to nineteen dollars. First day of twenty-two, it'd go up to twenty-one dollars, and then the first day of twenty-three, it would go up another dollar. So over the course of the next four years, you would, on average, you would have a dollar seventy-five cent, uh, per month increase, or per year increase in trash fees, trash fees. Somebody asked me, um, somebody asked me if Covanna really did raise the rates for two thousand and twenty. And, uh, this is the, uh, copy of the agreement with Covanna for the year two thousand and twenty. Uh, it's a rate increase of two dollars and eighty-six cents per ton, and and I think those of you out in the audience, I think one of those papers that I passed out was, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we were charged thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents per ton. And this year it's going to thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. Also in, on your, on the back page, in the very back page of what I just passed out, the Public Works issued a hundred and fifty-three totes, twenty-two lids, we picked up a hundred and eighty-one mattresses. We had four hundred and ninety dumpster yards of heavy trash that's above and beyond what our guys pick up on the trash trucks. Uh, we picked up five hundred and seventy dumpster yards of brush, eight hundred and forty dumpster yards of wood chips. We picked up four hundred and fourteen tons of trash due to street sweeping. And we had, uh, four thousand, six hundred and forty tons of trash that we delivered to Covanna. And then recycling, uh, netted four hundred and seventy-three tons of trash. So I wanted to pass that on. This is, uh, available for cup, uh, public viewing. I have a couple here if, uh, you want to look at them. So this is the sheet that we're going off of. The proposed rate increase is two dollars and twenty, two dollars and twenty-one, two dol- uh, two dollars and twenty-two, one dollar and twenty-three. Stops after twenty-three. Dollar seventy-five increase per year over the next four years. We also pick up commercial trash. Uh, in twenty, uh, the, it's twenty dollars per tote, there's no increase. In twenty-one, uh, in nineteen, or two thousand and twenty-one, it goes up one dollar. In two thousand and twenty-two, it doesn't go up at all. Twenty-three, it goes up one dollar. And the reason for that is we have less than fifty commercial customers, so it really has no bearing on the effectiveness of, of paying for trash delivery. So that's where we're at. We also have to invest in equipment. Uh, we have four trash trucks now. Two of them are almost seven years old now. So over the course of the next three years, we're going to have to, to, uh, systematically replace two of them. Also, uh, the Public Works Director has came to me about replacing our payloader. Our payloader deals with mattresses, deals with heavy trash, deals with brush, deals with chips. And, uh, uh, I don't know how old that machine is, but that is a, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment that he would like to replace sometime this year. So there's more to it than just picking up a trash tote. So, uh, I don't want to read it into the record yet. Uh, this is, this is a little less than, uh, what our financial consultant wanted to do. And the reason for that is some of you have came forward and asked that it be reduced. So we're trying to make the best faith effort to keep that cost down as low as we can. So, uh, before we introduce it, the ordinance are into record, I'm open for any questions, comments concerning trash pickup.
So you reviewed with Brad and you think that this, this increased plan is going to sufficiently cover?
We do.
Yeah.
We do. But however, I will tell you, uh, but I, I won't comment on it until we get into the next general ordinance, then I'll comment on it.
Thank you.
When was the last time we raised?
That's right, two thousand and thirteen. We went from ten dollars to fifteen dollars, and there is no, there has been a three percent incre- And there is no, there has been a three percent increase in Southside landfill and Covanna every year up until this year. And then you've got it with you. Covanna raised their rates by eight point two five percent. That is a very high rate increase. And we have two options. Go to the landfill or go to Covanna. We don't want to go to the landfill. The landfill is tearing up our equipment, so we stay out of that landfill. And taking trash to the earth and dumping it into the earth, there's a better solution than that. So
There's another option, we, I'm just, just to say, but I think that's not what the citizens want. The option would be for us not to pick up things that we're picking up now for people, like brush and limbs. But I, I would prefer that we keep providing that service.
Well, that service has been around for a long time, and anybody who's utilized that service knows how good DPW is. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Don't you guys already charge a one-time twenty-five dollar fee for any mattress you pick up?
Uh, is, I don't know if it's twenty or twenty-five. But it's
So although there's another expense to you, it's still being reimbursed by the citizens worth of getting it up?
Not all of it. Not all of it. Same way with heavy trash, same way with brush. But we charge on heavy trash, heavy trash, they'll call for heavy trash pickup, and we'll come out and take a look at it. Sometimes we don't charge for heavy trash. But most of the time, we do. The heavy trash is brought back to the DPW, put in a dumpster, and when the dumpster gets full, then it is hauled out for disposal.
And the mattress charge is for the benefit and welfare of the protection of our, our workers because of potential hazards for picking up these dirty mattresses.
Why I think anybody's arguing that is I think that I want to make sure that people knew that if that gets picked up, it gets added to our bill every time it gets picked up. So it's not like it's
Right, right.
And sometimes we have to go out with a payloader and pick up those mattresses because of body fluids and bed bugs. And we do not want any of our employees out there to touch those mattresses. So the only way, if, 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 if we use Ray's, Ray's comes out, and Ray's will even call us and say, we're not touching these mattresses because of this or that. Then we go out to the, to the, bring the payloader out, lift it up, and put it in the dumpster.
I know that if you call any other service around town, Goodwill, anyway, they will not pick up mattresses at all. So it would seem to me that because you are doing a service that no one else would do, it seems to me that you might want to even charge them.
And that's, that's not what's being discussed. It's not an increase in the mattress pickup, right? We're talking trash.
Right, no, we're trashing.
But, but no, it was, I wanted to elaborate on your point. It is a good one, because it's one of the reasons we made a decision and while back when we did make the charge for it.
And I thought maybe if you charged a little bit of that and like offset some other costs, or that's not my old least of ideas.
Any concerns with these fees? Anybody who's adamantly opposed to raising the rates, period?
Mayor, I just want to make a, a statement that the most popular thing you can do sometimes is never raise anything. But that's like giving your kids candy all the time and never giving them vegetables, you know? It's, it's doing things that make you popular and things that make to say, way to go, you didn't raise it. But we're, we're talking about raising something, you know, even in trash, where we're getting an additional increase ourselves. It's not as if we're raising it to bring the price up. We're just trying to offset costs. So I just want to make that comment.
Clerk will put that, that's in the, DPW has it, but the clerk will get it on the website, so you guys can look at it. Having said that, I'll ask the clerk to read general ordinance number one, two thousand twenty into the record on first reading only.
Uh, councillor has
Oh, I'm sorry.
For, uh, to read title only?
Yes.
Your honor, I'll second title only, as long as we're clear on, you know, what the prices are to the public, but title only.
By reading it, by title only, all of you have to approve. Anyone who doesn't approve, then we have to read the entire order. And then the clerk will read it just by the first two lines, and then you'll vote. So we'll start here on the left, buddy.
Title only.
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 All right. Jim, if you could read the general ordinance number one into the record by title only.
General ordinance number one, twenty twenty. General ordinance number one, twenty twenty is an ordinance that amends chapter fifty and chapter ninety-six of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to fees collected for trash pickup in residential and commercial properties.
Thank you. General ordinance number one, two thousand twenty is up for approval on first reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve a general ordinance number one on first reading.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second and third reading at a special meeting on February the eighteenth, here at seven P M. And in the meantime, we will have a town hall meeting here next Monday, February tenth, so the public can come in and comment on these two ordinances that we're going to hear tonight. Thank you, council.
I've got a question in the back.
I actually have a question for the city attorney right there. As you have better understanding than I do, can you actually read an ordinance on first reading by title only, or does it not have to be read into record?
The council votes for title only, can be read by title only. The only time you have to read the entire ordinance is the one-page ordinance.
General ordinance number two, two thousand twenty is an ordinance that amends chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances concerning rates charged for the treatment of wastewater. What I just passed out to the council, and Jim will, it was a agreement that was signed back in two thousand seventeen by the Board of Public Works and Safety and, and Citizens Energy for the treatment of wastewater through two thousand and twenty-five. And and council, you can go to page four. And this and this, this is what you should be looking at. These are the rates that were established and approved by the I U R C for the treatment of wastewater for the city of Beech Grove, the city of Greenwood, the city of Lawrence, Ben Davis Conservatory, and Whitestown. Effective the first day of two thousand nineteen, it's ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons treated. January the first of twenty is a dollar seventeen per one thousand gallons treated. January first, two thousand twenty-one, a dollar forty-one for a thousand gallons treated. Two thousand twenty-two, a dollar seventy per thousand gallons treated. And January the first of two thousand twenty-three, two dollars and two cents per thousand gallons of wastewater treated. That's what we are going to be charged as a city. And if you, I'm, I'm right here now on this sheet here. You guys should have, it should be your last sheet on the ordinance form. You go to the far right column. It's kind of got a, it's in a square. You see the six-dollar figure? Seventy-two dollars and four cents a year per customer. That's what Citizens is going to charge us to treat wastewater, increased from two thousand seventeen. That equates to six dollars per person, per, per customer. Our ordinance is only going up six dollars and thirty-four cents. And for those of you under, under this, if you look at two thousand and twenty, there is no money budgeted for preventative maintenance. Think about that for a minute. There is no money budgeted for upgrades and new projects. There is no money budgeted for root control. We used to treat, in the last five or six years, we treated the system to kill roots, which is the biggest problem with the sewer system. And there is no money budgeted for new equipment. This ordinance only, that they're going to, that we're going to introduce, only applies to the treatment of wastewater, nothing else. Is there any, is there something fundamentally wrong with that? And I haven't introduced this yet, but something that the council has to take into consideration. This is only, this ordinance tonight is only for the treatment of wastewater, and you know what, folks? It's not going to be enough. Look down at the bottom. See the bottom, that formula there? We just got through with the billing cycle with Citizens Energy. Citizens Energy is about to send us a bill for the treatment of one hundred and eight million gallons of wastewater from last month. Times a dollar seventeen per thousand. The clerk is getting ready to get a wastewater bill of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That's what, this came from the meters that service Beech Grove. Now, something else in the, and we talked about this in the workshop, forty percent of this water that we, that Citizens treated is not even wastewater. It's groundwater. Why? Because our system is old. We have sump pumps, drains hooked up to the sewer system.
Aren't we also connected to other people's output?
Now, that's, before it goes to the, Dave, before it goes to the interceptors, it's, there's a meter. There's nine meters throughout the city of Beech Grove.
We're treating that water that's coming into our system?
No. We're, we're paying for water that's coming from our system. And before it hits the interceptors, it's got a, it's metered. So tonight, I'm going to ask you to approve this on first reading, but I got to tell you, council, this isn't going to be enough. There's six hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the treatment of wastewater this year. First two months of this year, we've already spent five hundred thousand. We're not going to make it. But I'm conscious of the fact that you folks want to keep the cost down, and I do too. Now, if you don't do this, sewer thing, or the trash with equipment, you might as well forget that. That's not going to happen. So I'm asking you, you've got to move on this. And Jim, any, any thoughts on this?
Um, yeah, no, I agree. We, some of this preventative maintenance is something that needs to occur. But going from last year just to this year, just it went up twenty cents. So just this January versus last year, last January, that's twenty-one thousand dollars increase, just from a twenty-cent raise. Um, and that's going to continue. So you got twenty, twenty is one point one seven two one, and then next year goes to one point four one. So again, we're going to need another twenty-two thousand dollars next January on top of the, this twenty-one thousand. So this is going to continue to get worse. Paying the sewer, the treatment fees as opposed to the ROI and the pilot payment that the sewer makes to the, the general fund. Not sure if that would even be possible with what these rates are now. So, yes, sir.
This is probably necessary, probably a little bit more, but my question is, every rate increase that you guys have done in the councils before this council have always fallen to the single-family households. When are the apartments going to start paying their fair share? They flush their toilets as often as we do.
Good point. They have a, a formula for apartments where you can, apartments can be flat rate, just like residential properties, and it's set at thirty dollars per apartment. You can do that. But they're based on water usage. And that's how, they're not, residential, single and double-family dwelling is, doesn't matter how much water you use, you pay the same rate every month. Apartments do not. Apartments pay on what they use. That's the difference. Same way with all commercial property.
Is that something we should look at doing, or what?
It's up to the council.
I think that's a principle.
It benefits the city.
We need to find out exactly really what the money was, though, without just speculating, but it's a good point.
I got a quick question. Out of the sewer fund, from my understanding, we pay stuff out of that that is not sewer-related, like portion of the mayor's salary, portion of the clerk treasurer's salary, is coming out of the sewer fund. What is, do we know what other items are being paid out of the sewer fund that are not sewer-related? And my question about that is, is why don't we see about moving those items out of being paid for out of the sewer fund and have them paid out of the general fund? So we keep that money into, in the sewer fund to possibly build that up for preventive maintenance?
I agree a hundred percent. I think it's something that we shouldn't be relied on the sewer to run other services.
I agree too. I've been saying we need to wean. The problem is we can't do it overnight, I know that.
But that's just how it was budgeted last year, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's something that we need to look, look toward.
Do we know, is, is that something that we could possibly have?
I think, I think it's mostly employees, but I don't, the, the list of the actual employees that it covers, do you mean, like the?
Yeah.
It involves public safety.
Are we looking at doing that for the twenty twenty-one budget?
I mean, I, I don't know if we can do all of it for next year, but I think we need to start, we need to start that.
I think, Bobby, when you and I talked, it was for sure the mayor and the clerk. Right. Uh, and I don't know who else. There's a couple more in there. Right. That And I know from our conversation we had also was that there's two hundred and fifteen thousand as budgeted for truck maintenance, and there's no, or lease, and there's no lease for this next year. So there's two hundred and fifteen thousand in the budget for the sewer fund for a truck lease that's currently not being used. Well, it is being used. It's being used for this. To pay to treat wastewater. Right. I, I just want to make sure the citizens understand that, that previously in the budget, there was budgeted two hundred and fifteen thousand for a payment of a lease for a vehicle. That's not being covered for a lease of a vehicle this year. That money's being moved towards something else.
There's something on what the council are saying, which I agree a hundred percent, but it is true. One thing I think we ought to think of is, is we as a community, we talk about us as a community, this is something we own. And it certainly is important for the community to be aware of it. There's a return on investment involved in this. So it's something we own that actually helps us, first of all, we got to take care of the, the sewer and all that. That's the essential here. But above that, it can possibly help us in other areas that we were stuck with, especially public safety or other fees, which I do agree in the long run, we need to lean away from. One of the problems I had with selling the sewer was, was the amount of money that we had involved in it made it difficult.
But even if we had a total replacement of all of our, our infrastructure, we're still faced with these rates, because the I U R C, yeah, so
Another good point, I mean.
No matter what, no matter
No matter where we're at, we're going to get rates, yeah.
We could have brand-new lines everywhere, but we're, we're still faced with these rates because it's regulated to us. And then this doesn't even take into consideration those heavy rain events, because we're And then this doesn't even take into consideration those heavy rain events because we're penalized. These, these, this dollars that per, for, per gallons, when we have these heavy rain events, which we're getting into spring, they'll even increase what we owe because of, because of the extra water that's, that goes through our system.
The last billing, uh, on the last billing cycle, our wastewater treatment fee was a little over forty thousand. This next bill is going to be a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And it's all water-related.
What was the entire budget? I mean, we go from forty to one twenty-six, so that's an average of one sixty-six. So, divide that by six, there's our annual. So, do you know that, Jim?
There, there technically isn't a budget for wastewater, but he, it was plugged in, Gary, at six hundred thousand for the treatment of wastewater. That, for the whole year.
The year.
That won't get us to June. Unless we make an adjustment.
And per Liz's point, isn't the CWA, isn't that something we can negotiate, renegotiate?
Yeah, you can after two thousand twenty-five.
And there's no way we can break that and?
The only thing you can negotiate is not to pay the, uh, uh, daily fee if it goes over two point five million gallons. You can negotiate that with them, but you can't negotiate the rate. The rate's locked in. And another thing is, and I'm saying this in, in respect for everybody. For the next, in election, there's an election in four years. The next people that are sitting up there, you've gotta fix this so where they don't have to deal with it. You've got it, you've gotta come up with a solution to fix this issue to where the next group of elected officials sitting up there do not have to do this. You gotta bite the bullet and do it. This rate increase, I, I, nobody wants it, but if we don't do it, we are in deep, deep trouble.
But isn't, isn't the current rate increase we're speaking about, isn't that just a fix? This is no way to resolve.
This is a Band-Aid on a damn.
This is a Band-Aid on a broken arm. So, I mean, let's, let's really look deep into the problem then. So, this, I mean, let's quit. You know, like in twenty, when you, when the previous body approved the twenty twenty budget, so there was nothing budgeted per what you stated earlier about for root removal and all this other maintenance and everything. We knew that would be part of the, you know, there's always Murphy's Law. We always have issues. Why, why did we not, as a legislative body, prepare for that?
There was. We, as, as I said in the, uh, workshop that I did, at the end of eighteen, there was a proposal brought forward to raise the rates.
Okay. Right. And then nineteen was an election year? No. Okay.
If you raise it, if you raise the rates, if you do an ordinance, if I do this ordinance tonight and you vote no, you won't see this ordinance for another year.
Right.
It'll get back up in another year.
Okay.
So, I, at the end of eighteen it was brought up, it's not gonna come up again until the end of nineteen.
Okay. I, I respectfully want to spend your money just as, you know, frugal as I can. So, within that, from an engineering perspective, we're gonna replace two vehicles at over a half, half a million dollars in two-year cycle per what was read earlier. Is, is that, what's the life cycle on a garbage truck?
Five years.
Five years. And ours is how old?
Uh, we've just passed six years.
Okay.
There's two of them, Gary.
Right, I understand. It's a half a million dollars. Right. Well, just a hair under, half a million dollars. Okay. So, is it?
Do we sell those? Use something?
I don't know. It just, it just seems like, again, we're putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm. And there's some smart folks up here. Let, let's, I mean, we can fix this. We can. But it's gonna take a major paradigm change in our way we're doing business. If we were a business, we'd be bankrupt right now. We, I mean, we'd be like, yeah, we'd be very, you know, who shows up to work tomorrow? You know?
But who, that's, that's the problem, and I don't want to get into this because I'm overselling the utility. I'm not.
Yeah.
No. But that's why the state legislature is pushing, you, uh, making rules for municipalities to get out of the utility business. Because the, the, uh, municipalities do not want to raise rates to impose on people. And this is what you get into when you don't raise rates. You should raise them all the time. Every year you should raise them. But cities, I don't want to do it. Nobody up here wants to do it, but that's where we get in trouble. And that's what push, is pushing the legislature to force municipalities out of the utility business.
Respectfully, I don't have a problem raising them if it's required. Respectfully, I'm sorry, but I don't. But on the other hand.
It's doing business.
But again, I don't, I do have a problem picking up trash for one guy and not picking up the other trash for the other guy. We have to be consistent in our patterns. We have to. We have to set a standard and maintain that standard financially to be function, I mean, to be financially.
Could you, could you explain that? I didn't understand your last, picking up for one guy, not the other guy.
Department of Public Works, and these, those guys do an exceptional job if you guys are here. If they go by and there's certain things they can pick up, they will pick up, which I appreciate. And, but there's certain things, hazmat, mattresses and stuff, and then like David pointed to, they'll contact out, Ray, Ray says, no, pound sale on that, we're not doing that. And then our guys still have to do it. They're doing it as a courtesy. Sometimes there will, there'll be times when people receive things on their server bills per, uh, service they receive, and that's, that's the way it's supposed to be. But then there's sometimes, the guys are just being great guys, and they don't charge them.
Yeah.
But, and that's fantastic. But it, it's just like an ambulance run. If you are required an ambulance, you should be paying a hundred percent of that fee.
All right.
And I'm sorry. I, you know, I, I saw the chief earlier, you know, the city of Beach Grove should not be eating that cost, and I'm sorry. It, it just, we can't.
Well, Gary, wait a minute.
Well, okay, go ahead.
We don't have a choice when it comes to Medicare and Medicaid.
I understand that, but the, the difference or remainder should be then the individual's responsibility. And, and I know that.
If it's Medicare and Medicaid, we have, we accept assignment. So, we have to accept what the government pays us.
Right. And then the remaining should be the?
We have to write it off.
We have to write it off.
We have to write it off.
That's a lousy way to do business.
Talk to Congress.
Well, my point, though, is we, okay. Dave, I'm sorry, you have a question, Dave?
Mayor, I, I know Brad's not here. You're talking about a six-dollar increase per month per household? What we spend in, in repair last year, I know at one time you had talked about over seven hundred thousand dollars in four years to work on fixing some issues with sewer. What, what do you think you would need for repairs this year, if you were just to throw a number out there?
I wouldn't focus on repairs. I would focus on maintenance. Uh, if you raise your rates, uh, if the six dollars and thirty-four cents goes to eight dollars and thirty-four cents, you can do seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars worth of maintenance on the system. When I talk about maintenance, I'm talking about flushing.
Right.
Flushing, root control.
Maintaining.
Maintaining.
Okay.
Not, not improvements, just to maintain.
Understand. Have we pursued grants at all?
Millions of dollars.
Uh, not for that, but that will come this spring.
Okay. And that's something we will pursue grants for?
That's, that's something, there'll be a presentation brought forward to the council, then you'll have to decide which way you want to go.
Okay.
Mayor, since we've been, Mr. Ranks wants to say something.
What is the rate, what, what does the rate need to be? You know, if you're saying that this is adequate, what type of increase sort of would happen if we moved it here?
Our financial consultant and. Forty dollars and change.
Um, for this year?
That's not trash fees. That's just wastewater fees.
It would be about a little under forty dollars for a residential for twenty twenty.
And right now, it's twenty-six point six six, correct?
But I'm listening.
I'm sorry, are you saying a forty-dollar overall increase, or are you saying?
No, that's what your bill would be.
Total.
Yeah. Currently, your rate's twenty-six.
Thirty-nine and change.
Thirteen dollars.
Thirty-nine, sixty-two.
Here's, here's what I think you should do. You should pass this on first reading, and then you'll have two weeks to think about this, how you want to go. This just gets the process started. Tonight, first reading, it's just, you're just moving it forward. But I think as, as with the trash fee, you read it by title only. One of the three readings, you should read the entire ordinance. So, the, so the governing body knows.
I mean, we do have a, the workshop coming up.
We have a town hall next Monday.
Right.
To talk about, people want to come talk about it. So.
Yeah, we've talked about the, what the money is gonna be.
I'll, uh, ask, uh, General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand twenty, is up for approval on first reading only. But is there any interest, interest in by title only, or read the entire ordinance? You make a motion?
No.
Let's go ahead and read it. Okay, I'll ask, uh, the clerk to read the General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand twenty, into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Two, two thousand twenty, is an ordinance that amends Chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to fees charged to Beach Grove Sewerage Works customers for the treatment of wastewater. Whereas the City of Beach Grove operates and maintains a wastewater collection system that delivers wastewater to energy, Citizens Energy Group. And whereas the City of Beach Grove sanitary, sanitary sewer system consists of forty miles of pipe and a collection system, which includes over five hundred manholes. And whereas the Board of Public Works and Safety has entered into an agreement with Citizens Energy Group through twenty twenty-five for the treatment of wastewater generated by Beach Grove Sewerage Works customers. Whereas the cost to treat wastewater continues to rise, and rates must be adjusted to offset the rising cost of wastewater treatment. Now, therefore, be it affirmed that the Common Council for the City of Beach Grove desires to amend Chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove concerning fees for the treatment of wastewater. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that the Common Council desires the following amendments to be inserted in Chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Read Chapter five zero point zero three one and Chapter five zero point zero three two in its entirety, and replace with the following. Fifty point zero three one, calculation of sewer use charge. Citizens Energy Group and the City of Beach Grove's Board of Public Works and Safety have entered into an agreement for the treatment of wastewater generated by customers of Beach, of the Beach Grove Sewerage Works Utility. Such agreement was approved by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, I U R C, and the set rates for the treatment of wastewater based on per one thousand gallons of wastewater are listed below. Effective January first, two thousand nineteen, zero point seven five. Effective January first, two thousand twenty, one point one seven. Effective January first, twenty twenty-one, one point four one. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, one point seven zero. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, two point zero two. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, two point two five. The Common Council shall adjust the fees charged to customers of the Beach Grove Sewerage Works Utility for the treatment of wastewater as approved by the I U R C. Such fees shall also be adjusted as often as necessary to provide for and maintain the Sewerage Works Utility. B, for the use of the services rendered by the Sewerage Works, rates and charges shall be collected from the owners and or residents and tenants of each and every lot, parcel, or real estate dwelling unit or building that is connected to the city's sanitary, sanitary sewer system or otherwise discharges sewage, industrial waste, water, or other liquids, either directly or indirectly into the sanitary, sanitary sewer system of the City of Beach Grove. Such rates and charges include operation and maintenance. User charges, debt service costs, excessive strength surcharges, and other service charges, which rates and charges shall be payable as herein after, provided and shall be in an amount determinable as follows. C, for all user classes except residential users, the charges to treat wastewater shall be based on the quality of water, quantity of water used on or in the property premises subject to rates and charges as the same measured by the water meter they're in use, except as herein otherwise provided. For the purpose of billing and collecting the charges for sewage service, the water meters shall be read in accordance with the operating practice of Citizens Energy Group or other water suppliers, as the case may be. All users shall be filled, shall be filled month, or, I mean, billed monthly. Billed monthly or a period equaling a month, the water usage schedule on which the amount of said rates and charges shall be determined as follows. Residential users, flat rate. Effective February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, thirty-three dollars. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, thirty-seven dollars. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, forty-one dollars. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, forty-six dollars. In order to recover the cost of monitoring commercial and institutional and industrial waste, the districts shall charge the user the actual cost of sampling and analysis. Ordinance thirteen dash one nine seven nine.
You don't have to read that, Jim.
No, okay. Thank you.
Go down to fifty point oh three two.
Uh, fifty point oh three two, minimum charge, base level, basis of rates. A, the minimum charge on any monthly billing for a non-residential user shall be as follows. Non-residential minimums. Do I need to read that whole chart?
Yes.
Uh, for two thou, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, less than one inch, thirty-seven point seven four. One inch, forty-four point four three. One and one-quarter inch, eighty-two point four seven. One and a half inch, one hundred eleven point oh three. Two inch, one sixty-eight point one eight. Three inch, two eighty-two point four four. Four inch, five eighteen point four five. Six inch, nine thirty point one nine. Non-resi, residential minimums for January first, two thousand twenty-one, less than one inch, forty-five sixty-two. One inch, fifty-four oh three. One and one-fourth inch, one oh one point eight six. One and a half inch, one thirty-seven point seven nine. Two inch, two oh nine point five seven. Three inch, three fifty-three point one nine. Four inch, six twelve point one nine. Six inch, one thousand twenty point one nine. Minimums for January first of two thousand twenty-two, less than one inch, forty-eight sixty-six. One inch, fifty-seven seventy-two. One and one-fourth, one oh nine point three three. One, one and a half inch, one forty-eight point oh nine. Two inch, two twenty-five point five three. Three inch, three eighty point four seven. Four inch, six sixty-seven point seven six. Six inch, one thousand one hundred forty-two point three six. Non-residential minimums, January first, two thousand twenty-three. Less than one inch, fifty-two point one seven. One inch, sixty-two dollars. One and one-fourth inch, one seventeen point nine seven. One and a half inch, one hundred and sixty dollars. Two inch, two forty-three point nine eight. Three inch, four twelve point oh one. Four inch, seven thirty-two point oh two. And six inch, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and five cents. B, all users' rates and charges shall be based on the quantity of water used on or delivered to the property or premises subject to such rates and charges as the same is measured by the water meters in use and the strength of the waste where applicable, except herein after provided. C, in addition to all other charges for treatment of wastewater to an individual user, there is imposed a service charge of seven dollars and ten cents per month for all other users. The minimum charge is set out in Chapter five zero point oh three two, Divisions A and B above, shall include such service charge. Now, therefore, be it affirmed that the Common Council desires to amend the fees charged to customers of the Beach Grove Sewerage Works Utility for the treatment of wastewater. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that the ordinance only applies to the adjustment of wastewater fees passed on to the customers of the Beach Grove Sewerage Works Utility and no other fees. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect pursuant to the first billing cycle beginning after February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, and after passage by the Common Council, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Questions or comments? The February twenty-fourth is the, uh, I think it, it's near the end of the current billing period. So, uh, if you folks pass this, uh, the rate payers will not see an increase till probably April. So, uh, General Ordinance Number Two, uh, two thousand twenty is up for approval on first reading only. This time, ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those, uh, go individually. Gary?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
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 It passes four to three. Uh, we will hear it on second and third reading at the next, at the special meeting on February the eighteenth at seven o'clock in these. at seven o'clock in these chambers. We will have a, uh, town hall meeting here, uh, next Monday evening at seven P M. So you people, you, uh, people can come in and talk about how these rates will affect you. So, that concludes new business. Counsel comments. Buddy?
I want to congratulate, uh, Barbara Hook on her new position. Good luck to you, you'll do great, I'm sure. I'm looking forward to the town hall meeting. Uh, it's a good chance to kind of be informal in a way, and also learn even more about something that, um, has, something has to be done. And, uh, with that, that's all I have for right now. Thank you everybody for being here.
I just want to thank everybody for coming and congratulations to Barb.
Thank everybody for coming and, um, as usual, a little sports update. Beach Grove Basketball Team's doing okay. They play New Palomar, they play Ron Colly Saturday. And, uh, and, uh, the six kids from the wrestling team, as the coach or the gentleman said in high school, they, uh, going to the regionals this week. I've seen those kids wrestle one time at Newcastle. And I'm surprised more than six didn't make it because they got a good wrestling team. That's all I got.
Liz?
Oh, thanks everyone for coming. Congratulations Barb. Thanks, uh, Janice for your time, we really appreciate it. Uh, I'll get with you for an email. And, um, thanks everybody for coming and enjoy the evening.
Karen?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming. Congratulations Barb. Um, good luck, I know you'll serve as well.
Tommy?
I'd like to thank everybody for also, thank you Barb. I'd also like to thank the community for the outpouring of support and prayers after the accident I was involved in at work. Uh, just remind everybody that, uh, driving under the influence of marijuana and alcohol is not a good idea. Innocent people can get hurt. Luckily, nobody was seriously hurt in that accident.
I'd like to thank everyone for their time. Uh, Barb, congratulations. Uh, thank you for the other two ladies come forward volunteering. Um, also, again, thanks for, you know, Bobby's safe, that's a, that's a big thing, that could have been a bad thing.
Absolutely.
And, uh, again, just thank you for your time.
Again, um, we have a town hall meeting next Monday at seven P M. Uh, the only topic will be the, uh, rate increase. We have a special meeting on Tuesday, February the eighteenth at seven o'clock. We will only hear General Ordinance One and Two, there won't be any other business. And then the next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, March the second, two thousand twenty, at seven P M in these chambers. Thanks, counsel. Motion to adjourn. Mayor?
Mister Mayor, I, I ask you guys to please respond to what I said, you and my council representatives. I didn't really just talk to talk, I want to be educated on how we handle these things. And other than being a nuisance to you, that isn't what I want. I want to be to help my town. And I feel that I just keep being pushed off and pushed away and not given the opportunity to work with you. It's like you guys are working and then you try to shove it down our throats so that we do what you want to do. And the comments that you made were very scary. I mean, who assigns people to do what he says or do what he wants done? And who emphasizes that everyone serves for his pleasure? Those are things that are scary to me. And I want to be addressed either tonight, or you tell me that you'll come back and address it at the next meeting.
Oh, like, we can talk about it right now.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, uh, mayor is elected to a four-year term. There's certain duties that the mayor has. The depart, the police chief, fire chief, public works director, the parks director, senior services director, the program manager at Hornet Park. Um, those are all appointments of the mayor. They work at the pleasure of the mayor. That's no different in the City of Beach Grove than City of Indianapolis or City of Greenwood, City of Franklin, City of Mooresville. It's all the same. You serve at the pleasure of the mayor. The mayor appoints the Board of Public Works and Safety, they are the governing body of the city. They're not elected, they're appointed. The mayor can appoint up to five people to serve on that board. We've always only done three. The mayor has three appointments to the Redevelopment Commission. I can appoint, they have to live in Beach Grove, but I can appoint whomever I want to appoint to that. There's things that I would like to see done. I am no different than any other mayor. The mayor of Indianapolis would like to see things done. Mark Myers in Greenwood would like to see things done. These are the things that I want to carry out. One of them, for instance, is the Greenway. I'm an advocate for the Greenway, so I want to appoint people who are going to make sure that goes. I'm not being disrespectful for anything, that's just how government works. I appoint the city attorney, the city attorney appoints the R D C attorney and the B Z A attorney.
I, I understand your appointments, I, I guess it's the attitude that you appoint who you want because they will do what you say. That's, that's not the right way to do it.
I'm not sure.
You appoint people that have the same likes as you like maybe, or they're Democrat or Republican, whatever. But you don't.
Let me ask you something, if you were the mayor and, and I opposed everything that you did.
I would not be the mayor.
Wait a minute, li, listen.
First of all.
If you were the mayor, eh, would you appoint me to a department position when I oppose everything you do?
I would.
No, you wouldn't.
To a position where I felt that we were working together for the better of Beach Grove.
No, you wouldn't. If I oppose anything that you do or propose, you're not going to have me put up here.
Why not? I mean, aren't, isn't that what we're for?
No, no.
We sharpen each other.
No.
We.
It doesn't work that way. All, all due respect.
Isn't that democracy? What you're proposing is either a monarchy or a dictatorship.
No, they, come on.
Clearly not the case, come on.
No.
Let's be serious, let's be serious about this.
I am being very.
No.
I think what she's looking for is just an apology here of how she feels, like.
Elections have consequences.
Elections do have consequences, but yet you are all, all of you, any elected or appointed official is responsible to the citizens of Beach Grove.
I agree.
Not to what you want done, not to you guys saying whatever the mayor wants done. I've even heard a council member say, I'll do whatever the mayor says. Why do you do that?
I'll make a, I'll make a statement, I'll do whatever's right. I'll do whatever's right, I promise you that.
Whatever is right, and that's all we want.
Yeah.
Whatever is.
And that's. Yeah, but what happens if you don't like what, what they do?
Well, then if, if they truly, if they truly have done what they think, not, not what they feel the mayor wants them to do, or not what they feel the other council members want them to do, but they're doing what they feel is right, what represents their district people, then that I will buy.
They should, every one of those.
I buy by the decision you made on the R D C. My name, which my councilman was supposed to put my name up tonight, did not do. So, to me, somewhere something's not correct. People are not doing what they say they would do. And then also, everything is stacked, everything is stacked. You know, if, if you're, well, how many people are on more than one board? Of you guys out there? Come on Liz, I know you are.
Yes.
And I saw two other people in a different board. How come all the boards have like a total of six or eight people? That six or eight people is what's making all the decisions for us. We want to be a part of that, and we elected people because we thought those people had our concerns at heart. Not just what they want to see done. I want to see Beach Grove thrive, I want to see it be beautiful. I understand that there's laws and rules and stuff, but turn your name tags around. Turn your name tags around. Look at it. No one's going to do it?
Yeah.
What are you going to say? It says honorable. Live up to that. That's all we ask. We ask that all of you live up to that.
Don't you think that these seven, or eight people up here are going to do what they think is right for the city?
I don't think they have, I mean, the January board was.
Do you think coming up here calling us bobbleheads, is that honor, is that honorable?
Well, eh, eh, maybe it wasn't honorable, I don't have honorable in front of my name.
Don't you, don't I want to get a church over here? Don't you guys want a church in Beach Grove?
Kevin, this has nothing to do with Christianity. This has to do with every human being.
And having respect.
Being honorable, being truthful, living up to your position. You are public servants. You all serve at our pleasure. I understand that, that doesn't, when it says our pleasure, that doesn't mean we get to do whatever we want to with you. That doesn't mean you get to do whatever you want with us.
I agree, and when, when are we judged? When are we judged? Come on, this is simple, this isn't hard stuff. When are we judged?
It's simple, you're judged at voting fourteen thousand people, you were voted in by somewhere around fifteen hundred. That's not a representative. That's shame on the people, yes.
Yes.
But that doesn't mean that they're saying, that Beach Grove is saying, Mister Mayor, do whatever you want to do. That's not where we want to go.
I always look at that as the voters spoke.
The voters did.
This is the third election I was, I was elected, the people spoke.
The voters did speak, but not the majority. Once you are elected, you serve fourteen thousand people, not fifteen hundred.
Ma'am?
There's actually seven thousand.
Ma'am, how long have you been in Beach Grove?
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, I just want to ask you, how long have you been in Beach Grove?
I lived here back in seventies and eighties, and we've been back three years.
So you were here when Gush Wilder was mayor?
Yes.
And let me tell you, back when he was mayor, there's still more than three or three, thirty-five hundred votes at the most.
Okay, and that's not.
So it really is irrelevant.
I mean, the mayor brought that up, but.
But that's when, that's when, um, that is when, uh, elected officials are judged.
It changes the, it doesn't change if you guys.
There's only about seven thousand voters, the rest are kids and stuff.
Need to act with honor. That you need to make decisions based on what you have researched, what documents you have seen, what you've uncovered, not just at one another's say-so, or the mayor's say-so, or me as a citizen, my say-so. It's, it's a group effort, and it's a, being on that board is a great honor, a great honor. We just want to act with honor, and I'm, I don't know, I'm going off of just by the January meeting, the R D C, and when I talk with you personally.
Ma'am, I, I can tell you for a fact, I've been on this board for eight years, this is starting my ninth. And I, whether I agree with Dennis or not, is irrelevant to me. It's my thoughts, it's my brain. There's been things brought up to this council, like, I'll give you an example, golf carts. A lot of people wanted golf carts. Let me tell you, for a person that you're saying doesn't look at things, I drove to frickin' Spencer, Indiana. I drove to Franklin, Indiana. I met with the assistant, uh, police chief there. They passed a golf cart resolution. And you know what? All these people wanted golf carts. He says, you know what, how many people come down and apply for a permit? One, Franklin College, that was it. But what I'm saying is, I did my research. I did research on, we wanted a non-smoking. I did research there, but we had this room filled, I mean, standing only room. People from Greencastle to tell the, the council that they didn't want a non-smoking. They wanted to go ahead and have smoking. And you know what, we had more people in here for that meeting than when we passed a, a two million dollar bond issue. That's how concerned people were over a two million dollar bond. I would have been here for the two million dollar bond, to hell with the non-smoking. But, but that's what happened. And I'm telling you right now, I, I have done my research, so don't ever accuse me of not. Plain and simple.
No, I did not accuse you.
This meeting is adjourned as far as I'm concerned.
You guys, all I'm saying is, don't confide to.
He's second.
Motion second?
Be honorable. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Uh, motion to adjourn the meeting.
I think we already did.
Second, I don't know what time it is, Jim.
Eight fifty-four.